Motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 25th. Councillor English, Councillor Lando, all those in favor. Motion's carried. Is there any business arising from those minutes of April 25th?
There are conflict during the public hearings. So are you getting this?
Yeah.
There is a clear conflict on this first one due to a business relationship. So that's item five.
So we have three public hearings today. And the first public hearing is zoning amendment by law 2129 of a vacation rental at 2040 Mountain Gate Road. And I have an opening statement. I'm going to read this opening statement as to apply to all three of the public hearings. The public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representation to council. All persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw should be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Please observe the rules. If you have any concerns with the manner in which the hearing is conducted, direct your comments to the Chair. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members today is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. In considering the proposed bylaw, council may have received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review in a binder located at the, with the Director of Corporate Administration. Before we begin, I'd like to ask the corporate officer to confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Your worship for zoning amendment by law 2129 for vacation rental, 2040 Mountain Gate Road. We did not receive any public submissions.
So we're going to have a brief presentation. I'll go through the speakers list. I'll be calling a minimum of three times from the public for any comments. And this is again the zoning amendment by law 2129, vacation rental at 2040 Mountain Gate Road. Mr. Solik.
Thank you, Richard. The proposed vacation rental zoning amendment application is to permit full home vacation rental. And as proposed, it would be a three-bedroom full home vacation rental. Currently, there are two other vacation rentals on the street, one there and one there. And I will leave it there for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Polak, you have indicated you wish to speak.
Thanks, Your Honor, and counsel. Um, yeah, mostly it's comments. Number one, I like the house, so that's not a problem.
What is your address?
Uh, tenants, 4785 Airport Way.
Oh, dude, that's good. That's the one we want.
The plan that's presented, I find a little bit misleading. We've got it in front of me. Counsel doesn't seem to have it in front of him. The one with the dimensions on it. Yeah. So you'll see that the setback required is three meters going all around. And it's proposed to build a carport to accommodate one of the three required parking spots. And there's a number there, 2.02 meters, as a setback within the three-meter zone. But I find the 2.02 to be a weakness, leaving actually. That's really delineating the gravel, the tivi pavement distance for the setback requirement. Whereas the roof of the carport is going to be 1. something meters inside the three-meter zone. It's going to start, it's going to be leave 1 meter, point something to the setback lot line instead of three. So to me, that's not a minor variance when it's more than 50%. And I think that that should be resolved first before you get into vacation rental. Because if you can't build this carport and you can't park a car there, then you don't have your required parking. So I'm not saying it can't be done, but that should be, I think, the correct order of things. And also, if you look here, there are photos, I guess, the photo's obviously dated. But there's already another building on the property that isn't shown. And my question is, what is it and what will become or what might become in terms of residential use or vacation use at a later date? The trouble with gravel driveway in general, especially this one, is actually it's not defined. And I think it's not outrageous to think that there'll be trucks and whatever all over the front of the house. And so if you were to approve it, I would think that it should be paved and defined as the parking area rather than just willy-nilly all over the whole property. So generally, I think that this should be held over until you get more information and resolve those two issues. The driveway, but especially the setback. You can't have something 1 meter from the, to a zone that's supposed to be three meters. It's just not appropriate. So in general, I don't like the way the entire vacation rental is going with this entire housing, as is this one. I think we're better off to that partial. I know you're trying to get to the 125 as fast or slowly as you can and cap it. And hopefully our plan will be given the time and resources to go and find out what other ways that that would do in this, in situations like this. There's lots of lessons out there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel and come up with a plan that works a heck of a lot better. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you.
Your worship, question then, Mr. Polak. Where is this other building?
Um, it's back into the west.
And how big is it?
Well, it's very nice. It's architecturally the same as the house. I haven't had no reason to go and measure it.
Is it the size of a garage or a shed or?
Oh, it is. You know, nice glass doors and everything. And I don't think it's above here. I have no idea, but I think you should find out. Okay. Thank you.
All right. A couple of questions that are brought up there, Mr. Solik. Well, let's talk about the accessory building. Do you know anything about the accessory building?
I don't know anything about the accessories building.
Okay. Have you got any comments for us on the setback or this?
Uh, the setback did change on November 8th. The new zoning bylaw changed to the R1 zone, changed the setback from three meters to 1.5 meters. And these are also allowed to be checked into that setback.
So the 2.02, it beats the bylaw.
Yes, that's what I meant.
And there was a question about paved driveway. I don't know if we have any air rules or regulations on paved driveway.
No, it's only if it's over four, or more parked vehicles, then it has to be paved.
And this would be three.
Three.
Any comments or questions from council? Mr. Counsel.
Your worship, just concerned about identification of the vacation rental on that street. There's two already there. This will be the third one. There's a lot of empty lots that have not been built on yet. Is Mr. Solik going to ask that question? How many homes are already standing? Is it just like lesson six?
Yeah. I mean, I know they are, I think we had another building permit in on that street this year. I, you know what? I'm exactly sure that area always enough to date.
Robert, how many houses are on that street?
Home on the south side, there are three. And on the north side, there's this one. Tyler has just about finished his own home. There's a chap in between who's just cleared his lot, ready to get going. And I know another one's going to start in next spring on the, or side.
One side of the street. Thank you.
Your Honor, I'm the property owner. I can assist in answering any questions. I didn't have the opportunity to say nothing.
You are really welcome to make a presentation. I'm just going to take a question from my counselors and the floor could be yours if you like.
Sure. I'm just following up. I would like to find out about the other structure because I don't know what is the structure where someone resides. Is that going to be included in the vacation rental or?
I think that we're going to get the answer in just a few seconds.
Great.
You are Mrs. Alexandra Sodzakowski?
Sodzakowski. Thank you. I'm Alex Sodzakowski, 2040 Mountain Gate. And I live at the property. I've been living there for the last three years, raising my kids, going to school here. We actually built the property intending it to be sort of a retirement plan, vacation rental until we retired. And several years ago, we thought, what were we waiting for? So we moved up here with the kids and we haven't left. So we're currently living in the, in the property. You got the answer regarding the carport. It's actually under construction right now. It meets all of the bylaws of the city. We do have a gravel driveway. I actually haven't done a whole lot of landscaping. I'm sort of trying to keep the setting a natural setting. And I would only pave if required to because I respect the ability of the ground to absorb the water. The less paving, I think, the better. So that's sort of why it's left up hazing. I'm a little OCD, yeah, obsessive compulsive. So the gravel is actually kept in pretty nice condition because I can't stand muddy tracks under the house and that kind of thing. The structure in the back is a little shed and, well, I really don't want to publicize what we keep in there, but let's just say it's all of our toys for living in Rebelstoke. It is insulated so that the kids tune their skis in there. So it's insulated, so it's not frigid in the winter, but it's got rubber mats that smell. It's unfinished inside. It's really just a shed for storing stuff. And I honestly don't remember the size, but it was built with the intent, and it's movable too. So it was built with intent. It just looked like a garden, a garden shed. There are actually four houses, I think, as someone clarified, on the south side of the street. And two of those are vacation rentals. And on my side, there's just me. Somebody has cleared the property in between. I think that was the property reference. And then the one a few lots down from me, that's almost finished. I would ask that you please approve this vacation rental. I actually submitted almost a year ago at this point. Not that that makes my case any more compelling. We don't have any objections from the neighboring property owners. It's not a dense area, even if built out fully. It's a pretty removed neighborhood without a lot of traffic issues, issues like connectivity with vacation rentals also. So thank you very much for this suggestion. Any question?
Floor is open for the first time. Anybody would like to address the council?
Yes, I'm in.
And what's your address again, Mr. Howard?
Um, my official one, the driver's license, 224 Valley Press Court, California, Alberta. I'm trying to make the move to Rebelstoke. I'm at One Way Rebelstoke. I reside at many hours here in the city.
Um, One Way Fourth Street, right?
One Way Fourth, well, I'm just in favor of this property. I see this property here and I see a wise woman with a bunch of gray hairs. Very, very wise. And I see a lot of gray hairs in this group. There's a lot of wise people at these meetings because they understand this is more important than the election that's going on, whatever's going on today. These are important matters. This person will succeed at what she does. She's going to want the right people there because her life, her livelihood depends on it. There's another guy after her saying technically it's not right. Yeah, okay, there's technicality there. My other neighbor, she got approved. She wasn't out to COVID. So I think because you approved her, you got to approve this one too. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Is there any more comments for the public for a second time on this zoning amendment by law 2129, which is 2040 Mountain Gate Road? Comments from the public, Councilbrothers?
May I ask one question of Mr. Polak? And I think there's a building scheme in this whole area. And I'm just wondering whether or not the building scheme anticipates vacation rental.
You're right on there. There is a building scheme in the, in the area, but there were three lots going in from Camosi on up Lanza and Mountain Gate that were sold before I got registered. And just for future reference, building schemes, remember Alan gave a clarification on a normal building scheme. And I think your closing remarks, Alan, were, you know, when it's sold, the developer disappears. But the way I wrote this building scheme is until I own the last property, I have the say and can change any rules. And more importantly, if anyone breaks the rules, any other citizen, doesn't take me, can enforce it and go for damages or whatever they want to go for. So it's not just me. If I'm dead, there's another 30 years of this building scheme enforceable by any other person who has one of the lots that is subject to the scheme. But these, this particular property is not because it didn't get registered at the time on those three lots. Okay?
Thank you. Looking for any comments from the public for a second time on this vacation rental at 2040 Mountain Gate Road? Looking for any comments from the public for a third time, third and final time on this vacation rental property? Any comments or questions from council? Looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Councillor Nixon and Councillor Solz, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward that zoning amendment by law 2129 be read a third time.
Motion by Councillor Nixon, seconded by Councillor English. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion's carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward that zoning amendment by law 2129 be adopted.
Motion by Councillor Nixon, seconded by Councillor English. Discussion on the motion. Councillor Solz.
Your worship, yeah, I'll just bring up, this is one single road. We've got maybe dozen houses going on this road. And we've got this maybe third vacation rental. A little concerned about going forward from this point or after this point about densification for vacation rentals. So I think we need to be calm in some of those facts. Seems to be a good place looking at the parking and whatnot to allow for that sort of recreation vacation rental property.
I think point's well taken. And I think that'll be one of the main issues that we will be talking about when we start to look at the next phase of vacation rental industry. Motion's on the floor that by law 2129 be adopted. Is there any more comments or questions from council? All those in favor? Motion is carried. That ends the 2040 Vin Mountain Gate Road. We're going to go right into the zoning amendment by law 2172. And this is 112 Fourth Street East. And this is a vacation rental. And Mr. Solik, you have a, before I do that, I just want to confirm with the corporate officer that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Your worship, the zoning amendment by law 2172 vacation rental for 112 Fourth Street East, we have received a total of 15 submissions, 13 of which are your package, two of which I received afternoon. Both are in opposition as well.
And I do have a speakers list set up and I will be going through the speakers list and again, then going out to the public for comments. A minimum of three times. And there will be lots of opportunity for people from the public to speak to this zoning amendment by law 2172, which is 112 Fourth Street East. And Mr. Solik, you have a presentation for us.
Thank you, Richard. Post vacation, or pre-zoning amendment application is to permit full home vacation rental as, in this case, a four-bedroom house. Currently, there are two other vacation rentals on the street directly adjacent to the property. And I will leave it there for questions.
Going to the speakers list, I see that a relation to the proponent is here. And Mr. Hesman, you can have the floor first as the applicant if you like.
Thank you, guys. I am Rod Hesman, son of Bill Hesman, who has been a longtime resident of Rebelstoke here. And two years ago, decided that this house was a bit too much, so he moved out to Vernon and just became an apartment that I rent for him there. So our idea with this house is to try to keep it in the family. We have family in New Zealand that, that will undoubtedly move back here. Jason and Natalie, Natalie's my niece down there. They tried to move here about four years ago. And she found work in Cologne and he was working here at Badger's Plumbing. So their long-term plan is to come back here. So what we want to do is allow my dad to enjoy his retirement and at the same time, keep roots in Rebelstoke here so that eventually that family can move back here. We have for the last two years rented this house to tenants, long-term tenants. And part of the process of me coming here was reviewing some of the concerns. And a lot of the concerns are around parking and the number of vehicles that end up being in a vacation rental place. And I'm just here to say that experience over the last two years is it's not much different when the house is tenanted for a vacation rental to certain people. In fact, I believe that a vacation rental in this case will reduce the number of vehicles that are there. I have colleagues that I work with in Vancouver and several associates that I work with in Europe that want to come to Rebelstoke and undoubtedly would be tenants in this house. They would be family, so they would have one vehicle, but a family staying in a house like this. Whereas when, when we rented it to people for one year, where in the last, last winter was about an eight-month tenancy that we had, there ends up being anywhere from six to eight people in the four-bedroom house. And most of them, they don't all have vehicles, but there's, there's four or five vehicles which, you know, it does cause problems. I mean, we cleared the backyard this winter and they park most of the time in the backyard. But there are two streets. There's ordinance for us, so they try to manage their time around that as well. We do have ample room for parking. We do have a lane. Our neighbor, Darcy, has parking in his backyard as well. He's the middle house of the three proposed, or the middle house of the other two that do have vacation rentals. We've already discussed what we do in the winter, both snow removals. So we've worked out an agreement where we'll jointly remove snow so we can keep our backyards plowed and make sure that any vehicles are off the street that should appease everybody else. And I guess that's it. I mean, the main concerns were sense of community and family. And I mean, we've been here, my dad finished high school here and taught here for 35 years and lived here most of his life. And we do want to keep roots here. So this is one way that we're able to do it, keep this house available for the next couple of years until Jason and Natalie can move back here. And I welcome, you know, any questions on, on what we intend to do about the parking situation. But, you know, it's, you know, there are parking on the, on the lot. We do have access off of order to a current garage. One parking stall will be beside, the rest will be through the alley. So I sure hope that that is considered by everybody today. I guess that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay. So going to the speakers list, the first person that wishes to speak is James Wallford.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, and counsel. I am opposed to this completely. This is a small family neighborhood, small lots. We just don't need this. This is also in the heritage conservation area. And if my memory is correct, it states that it has to be in keeping with the neighborhood. We have enough vacation rentals. I just don't know why we have to keep coming back to this area all the time because it's not enough water. And it's taking up, well, I'm retired, so it doesn't matter. Taking up water, take time off work to deal with this and wasting council's time as far as I'm concerned. Because it's just the downtown core. Should be a moratorium in that area so you don't have to be coming back day after day, week after week. There's a new subdivision that's going to be going in Arrow Heights. So everything should be kosher up there. And that's all I've got to say. And thank you very much for your time.
Next person on the list is Carolyn Moran.
Hello, Carolyn Moran. I'm a longtime resident at 214 East Fourth. Here we are again. We did this not long ago. So James hit on a few things. We're back. I know there's a petition going on in our neighborhood to try and stop vacation rentals. We're in a tight neighborhood. We're looking at R2, going to R2V. And is that V for virus? It feels like it's a virus eating at our fabric of our community. We're a small neighborhood. We're not on a one-acre lot. We're not a quarter-acre lot. We're on 0.1 of an acre. We're tight. We're a small area with a lot of houses tucked together. Where are the kids going to come? Now we're looking at, in the Heritage District, as James mentioned, we're talking about parking lots and backyards. The city doesn't allow us to park on Fourth Street in the evenings. So that puts all of us onto the side streets. It's a problem. And in my experience, vacation rentals, they're just going to park wherever it's easy for them to park. A long-term renter will know they're supposed to be off the street. They're going to make an effort to park where there's adequate parking. But we're kind of in a crisis with the parking. We're also in crisis for long-term rentals. We have 43 units coming available for vacation rentals on Michael Road. I'm not against vacation rentals everywhere, but let's put them where they make sense. 304 Town Link, they've got an application coming up. That's a perfect location. That's not a family-oriented building. It's a great location for it. But in our community, in the tight, tight neighborhoods, it doesn't make sense in there. And, um, yeah. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. Thanks.
The floor is open for anybody that wishes to speak on this vacation rental at 112 Fourth Street East.
Hi there. How's it going, everyone? It's Darcy Allen. Where is it? 112 directly next door to where I'm going in right now. And I've been through the whole process. And the neighborhood should be concerned what's going on here because it is the biggest event for the neighborhood and there should be people that are worried. But I've talked to people within the community who are in favor, but they don't want to come to council. They don't want a headache that's not theirs. But they know this is a successful opportunity. And the location is the best because it is. It's location, location, location. You can have your vehicle safely there. You can walk to the restaurants because they don't want. The vacation rental is that Rod's talking about bringing in. The rich Europeans, I've dealt with these people. When they come on vacation, they drop 20 grand in two weeks. They don't think twice about it. They just do. Those people want that property. The location is the best. It's the closest to the downtown core. They want to go drop 200 bucks for sushi. They want to go spend 200 bucks with the legit idiots. They want to experience the nightlife of Rebelstoke. And they don't need parking because they're flying in and they're leaving their cars at home. And Rod has the contacts. His successful business will help me because I want those people as my neighbors. Right now, I have people in there that have stolen from me. They're young, they're 19, they're 20, they're making mistakes. But those kids that have dreams are always going to show up in Revelstoke. And those kids that are 19 or 20 and are dreaming now of surviving Revelstoke Mountain Resort, because it's there, they're going to show up regardless. And they'll find accommodations regardless. They'll even lie to people to do it. They'll lie down on couches and lie down in vehicles and they'll be more determined to be successful at being here than you guys would be determined if not making them welcome. If you don't rezone this property, that's what happens to this property. All of a sudden, you have unlimited people staying there because somebody signed the lease and they're smart. And we can deal with this. And that's what's happened to this property. It's going in the wrong direction. And when one property goes in the wrong direction, the whole community goes in the wrong direction. Rod's coming here and he's giving a legitimate business plan which brings real money to the town of Revelstoke. And that property now needs to be serviced. It needs to be cleaned, the snow needs to be removed, that creates jobs. Not only that, it's for his family, the next generation, he's providing for his kids. If he's providing for his kids, his interest is his best heart. He's going to be the one telling people they're not welcome, you're not screwing this up for me. Part of the business plan is you're going to have people come in here. There's going to be people that make mistakes. They're going to think they're rich and they're going to think, oh, money can buy everything. I will knock on their door and tell them they're not welcome. Because if we advertise at 11 o'clock, we're in the community, there'll be a zero policy for them because we don't want those people. It's not what I want. I want to get a family that comes here every week of February. You might have heard this plan before, it's called time share, but I'm in control. So, the same family comes back every year, every year, every year. And they have kids that grow up within the community. And the blessings that that gives to the neighborhood is you don't know how valuable it is when you're raised and your friend is from Europe and you have a real friend that comes here every year and you grow within the community. And we can make all that happen. And there's people that are worried and scared and they're the ones showing up to meet you. But if people see it for what it is, they're indoors enjoying life because they understand the bigger picture. I'm in favor of this property. I say that. Thank you.
Floor is open for comments on vacation rental at 112 Fourth Street East. Just get your name and address when you're up for the podium, sir.
Counsel, my name is Chris Lawick. I live at 204 Street East. I'm reading this letter to you regarding the application to amend the zoning of 1112 Fourth Street East. Our home sits immediately across Orton Street from the above house. We feel that turning this residence into a vacation rental would negatively impact our family, our property and our neighborhood. We live at 204 Street East with our three-year-old son. We're currently expecting our second child in the next two weeks. By allowing a vacation rental in a family-centric area, you affect people's ability to get to know each other and create a cohesive community. The house could stay vacant for stretches of time and be filled with tourists who are not concerned with building a community. They come here to see the sights, party, ski, then they leave. Yes, Revelstoke needs tourism, that's what we're built on. But we also need families, need places for families to live. We don't want our young children to be surrounded by strangers who are only here to party. We don't want the noise and ruckus associated with transient skiers and sliders located right out of our kitchen window. This part of our community is for us to live in, not to provide beds for tourists. It's a residential area. The community of Revelstoke has plenty of hotel beds and various other forms of accommodation. We need homes for community members. This vacation rental plan would only benefit the owner and possibly one or two other property managers. If council were to approve this residence for vacation rental, we would seriously reconsider where we live. We are already concerned about the number of vacation rentals that have been approved on our street. If our homes become surrounded by vacation rentals, we feel like we're being squeezed out of our home, out of our neighborhood. We want our children to feel like there's a place, that it is a place of stability. Being surrounded by vacation rental units is not a place that I consider as stable or welcoming. Please have a careful review of this application. Consider the impacts on the families that live adjacent. We want a community feel to this neighborhood. And what the owner of 1112 Fourth Street East is asking is not benefiting the young families of Revelstoke. It's chasing us away. Thank you for your time, I appreciate your attention to this matter.
Floor is open for our comments on 112 Fourth Street East.
Bruce Allen, 415 McKenzie. I'm speaking in opposition to this rental. I think it's interesting, you asked Chris how many vacation rentals are in our neighborhood? Two, he says, that's two legal ones. We're not enforcing illegal ones. We can see a number from our property. I think what you're finding is that the community is becoming militant. They're getting angry, you're not getting the picture. We want a community of neighbors, of people that we know, that we can interact with. When we walk down our streets, we don't want to see black windows because a vacation rental can only be rented for three months a year. The rest of the time, what happens to it? It is becoming a black window neighborhood. It's got to stop. People are welcome to come, but let's do this property. Do you know what an illegal vacation rental will get you in this way? $1,000 a day, five. They're pissed off there. This has got to be, you've got to think about the people that have lived here for years. We're not out to make some money here, we're here to have a home. Yes, you may have a problem with tenants. If you screen your tenants, you're less likely to have a problem. If you have in your lease arrangement, a set number of people that can live in this rental, you won't have five, eight cars parked. We literally have a place across the street from us that's illegal. There's 10 cars there, coming and going along with Scott Dukes. So, come on, slow down. Let's keep our neighborhood for people that live here, that have lived here a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor is open a second time on this vacation rental application, 112 Fourth Street East. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to this? Any comments or questions from council?
I'll speak a second time, seeing as it's my direct neighbor. What I hear is two people come up and they had a speech that was written a week ago. They didn't even know Rod or his story. He is the guy who's lived here and built a community. He wants to...
Doesn't live here anymore.
It's a temporary thing.
Mr. Howard, we all sat and listened to you speak. Mr. Howard, you got about a minute to speak on your second time.
Fair enough, but thank you for that, man. This isn't, gentlemen, they want a hybrid. He's smart, he puts together 25 million dollar corporations, he goes flying, he's a smart individual. He wants a hybrid so his dad can come here as a travelist from Vernon to Calgary, be able to have the time he wants. He wants to go to get to his kids in the summertime, he comes, he uses it in the off-season. He wants it to be a vacation rental, to be an income property. Vacation rentals in this neighborhood that are illegal, go after those ones. They're illegal, they're not applying to the rules, and that's what he's frustrated at. Mine is a vacation rental, it's not a black window. I'm there on a daily basis, I'm doing my best, I'm out there doing my best. And I'm scared because of the illegal ones. If you, what are the legal ones? This guy's doing it legit, he has to be passed. There isn't a better property in Revelstoke than that one. And he earned it, he built this community.
Thank you.
James Wallford again, 217 Fourth Street East. I beg to differ with you, sir.
James, just talk to me, okay?
Okay, thank you. I just don't know what to say about this. We've all lived in this neighborhood for 28-plus years and we do not need this. I have a small grandchild living with me, I just do not need it. I hope everybody will understand. We're a long time and we're not here just for the short time. We're not, we've had to speak and everything, we've lived here. I don't know what else, I'm just too upset.
Floor is open.
Okay, Bruce Allen, 415 McKenzie. By the way, we took a measuring tape, measured from that house to our house, we measured from our house to Joan's house. Neither one of us were notified of this public hearing, as we're supposed to. So, you're not meeting your obligation. We're within 100 meters and we did not notify. Thank you.
Floor is open for a third time, anybody wishes to speak? Mr. Hesmond?
Just a couple of things. Comments about screening tenants? Everybody gives a resume. You know, we've done, we created screening tenants and in terms of writing into leases, how many people are allowed in there, we did that the first year too. But the problem with the Tenancy Act in DC is tenants are allowed to have guests and there's nothing that the landlord can do about that. So, we've been through that, we know what the issues are, we've tried to address it. So, our solution is vacation rental. Because then you can actually do something about it. If the people are in there and they're not living up to it, you can have some to get over. If they want to come back, you don't let them come back. There's a lot more things that can be done when it's short-term rentals than when it's long-term rentals. Because once a person's in your house as a tenant, it's hard to get rid of them. That's all.
Floor is open for a third time on 112 Fourth Street East. For a third and final time, any comments from the public? Looking for a motion to close a public hearing, Counsel Nixon, second by Counsel English. All those in favor? Which one's carried?
Your Worship, I'll bring forward for discussion purposes that zoning amendment bylaw 2172 be read a third time.
Motion by Counsel Nixon, seconded by Counsel English. Discussion on the motion, Counsel Nixon?
Your Worship, just I won't be voting in favor of this. I think when you have the neighborhood really feeling that their voice isn't being heard, that they have illegal vacation homes in their neighborhood that we need to get on top of and they need to know about them, maybe they have, and we're working towards that. And I just, I have to...
Counsel Roberts?
I agree with Counsel Nixon. I think throughout the problems throughout the world, this is the learning experience with vacation rentals. And certainly, we're struggling with it and we appreciate, you know, the input from residents and the neighbors because they let us know how they feel and how they feel about this community and what we need to do. And I think it's pretty clear to me that there are certain areas that are our neighborhoods that need to maintain and stay as neighborhoods. And certainly, some of the downtown areas that we've heard from residents are these types of neighborhoods. So, I'm inclined to say this is one of the neighborhoods where vacation rentals isn't the right place for... I think there are some places where vacation rentals are good, especially if there's an in-house person and it's a secondary suite. This just isn't one of those neighborhoods, so I won't be voting for it.
Any other comments or questions, Counsel Solis?
Your Worship, I'll concur. I've given lots of thought to this and talked to many of the neighbors over the last couple of weeks and listened to the proponent. I understand the situation. You want to keep them home, you want to have something for those coming in, great idea. Unfortunately, there's two other properties on the same side of the street and I feel again we're going back to that classification into the downtown core. The neighbors have said they're not comfortable with what's happening. And it's not necessarily because of the numbers, they've stated parking's an issue. In the private conversations I've had with some of the neighbors, they've stated some of the problems that they've had in the past with the vacation rentals illegal or illegal in the downtown core. So, I feel this is not a home to allow a third vacation rental on that block.
Any other comments, questions from council? Motion on the floor that bylaw 2172 be read a third time. All those in favor? Against? Motion is defeated. So, that ends the vacation rental zoning amendment bylaw for 112 Fourth Street East. And we're now going into bylaw 2144, 1645 Mason Road. And, uh... Again, the opening statement for public hearings will still remain. And I'd like to ask the corporate office to confirm that eligible process is followed according to the local government act.
Yes, Your Worship, for zoning amendment bylaw 2144 for vacation rentals, 1645 Mason Road. We received 17 submissions from the public and all were in opposition.
And again, I do have a speaker's list started. I'll be going through the speaker's list after the presentation and give calling a minimum of three times from the public for any comments. And this is again, vacation rental for 1645 Mason Road. Mr. Selvig?
And Your Worship, to propose a rezoning amendment is to permit vacation rental of all home consisting of three bedrooms. Currently on Mason Road, there is one other vacation rental directly adjacent to the proposed subject property. I'll leave it there for questions.
Just, Your Worship, a question for Mr. Selvig. So, one is next door, is that not proposed to be just for a suite? And did it...
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, this one here?
Yeah.
Uh, the existing one?
Yes.
I believe that it's for, with a suite.
Yeah.
Oh, it's present?
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm going to be going into the speaker's list and the first person that wishes to speak is Tom Robson.
I'm Tom Robson, I live at 1700 Lincoln Drive. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to talk to you. We're dealing with an issue that is very wide-ranging across the world, so it's not surprising there are some... I guess my feeling is that we should be looking at prevention and not cure. And I salute the fact that you are starting now to look at this in a broader perspective and try to come up with a plan for Revelstoke. We are recent to Revelstoke and the reason we moved here is for some of the things that were discussed earlier. We think it's a beautiful community, we think we're very welcoming. And the neighborhood that we've chosen is very much that way. You know, we enjoy the neighborliness of the people that are there. On the side of prevention, I think it's very important, until there is firmer guidelines in place and some regulation for this kind of thing, that I would oppose the vacation rental that is proposed here. And the reason being that I think it's very, very important to have someone resident in a vacation rental who can monitor what is going on. We all know that there are many, many situations where it goes smoothly, but there are enough where people come in for a short period of time, they are there to party, and we do not have bylaw enforcement after regular hours. So, typically, this can be on the weekend and as a result, by the time the problem is recognized, the people have to part it. That's one of the issues. The other thing is the parking, you know, certainly pending, this is a large home and it has been sitting empty for a good number of years, we've watched that. It does not make a neighborhood to have black windows, we know that as well. We've watched that. It does not make a neighborhood to have black windows. We know that as well. So this particular street has had a number of blocks sold recently. We do not know how it will develop. There already is one vacation rental sitting there. Part of the difficulty that we all face is that people will buy into a neighborhood, they will build a very large place that they can't actually afford and they hope to cover the mortgage through the vacation rentals. That doesn't work as a neighborhood is doing, you know. So I think there's many issues here that you're being asked to address. I think the important short-term things are that there's been no approval in the recent budget for additional bylaw officer time and I resist the idea that as a taxpayer, I have to pay for the policing of these situations when the owner is taking in good money for a vacation rental. I think there should be some responsibility there and what I have learned is that people who are responsible vacation rental owners will be very, very rigorous about the people that they allow in. In today's world, you can email back and forth, doesn't matter if they're in Sweden or in Alberta. You can find out what kind of people are these and what's their intent in coming to gravel soap. You can interview them by Skype and I know people that do that. So I think prevention is the way we go and by the way, that's the responsibility of the homeowner. So I think until you have people who are resident in the home and do that kind of rigorous appraisal, that I would oppose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person on the list that's indicated they wish to speak is Stephen Cross.
Mayor and councilors, it's Stephen Cross. We reside at 1550 Trail Road in Earl Heinz. We're about 200 meters away from the application property. And in the interest of full disclosure, I'll say that we, my wife and I do run a bed and breakfast in our own property, which is about a 6,000 square foot home, two and a half acres, lots of parking, not an issue. We rent, you know, there's a difference between B&amp;B and vacation rental, as most people don't. And the fact that we're home for every single visitor is a big difference. And also, we have limited capacity, we have two bedrooms, you can't take large groups and so on. So I wanted to say that in the interest of full disclosure, we'd like to go on record as being opposed to the application of vacation rental at 1645 Mason Road. Our reasons are as follows. And I might note that I sent this in on May 2nd, but I got bounced, I got the bounce yesterday, didn't go through on the email for some reason, to all councilors, admin, somebody else, some other station, so it all bounced. You might want to look into that, so that's why I'm speaking. The reasons are, there's already a vacation rental property adjacent to the applicant. When that property applied, we did not oppose it as the owners indicated they would be home at all times. It was an extra suite. Thus, a similar situation goes with B&amp;B, so we felt that was fine. However, when that property was approved, it was in fact approved for the whole home. It was not just approved for the suite. So just so you know that. Right now, they live there, so that's fun, but we're concerned about more vacation rentals on the same street. Even that property's generated the occasional street parking issue with tenants, no removal problems. The application you're reviewing has absentee ownership. The owners have never lived in the home and crowded parking on its property. The application suggests there's room for four vehicles, two in the garage, two in the driveway, but there's not enough room for sliders and their rigs. They will have to park on the street, no choice. Furthermore, we have little faith that vacation renters aren't going to just park on the street anyway because they don't want jockey cars in there in the garage for who wants to go out and who doesn't type of thing. The applicant is also promising to not exceed the bedroom quota based on water restrictions of this property, even though an extra bedroom actually exists within the house. Again, we have little reason to believe that this will be properly administered or managed through the absentee ownership. We also believe that the vacant lot on the other side of the applicant property is seeking or is about to seek vacation rental status before building. To end up with three vacationable properties in a row would be causing trouble in both noise, congestion, and services. It seems to me that the time to say no is now. One vacation rental in the street with only four built houses, which is the status of Mason Road at the moment, is enough. That's a 25% density already. So please do not open up our quiet neighborhood to the possibility of three vacation rentals in a row where only five houses would exist. Finally, I would say that our neighborhood is exceptionally quiet and we value this greatly. We believe our neighbors do too. Noise at night is easily heard up to 300 meters and more away. As an absentee ownership vacation rental with obvious parking challenges and water limitations situated right next to an existing vacation rental hardly seems like a safe bet for the neighbors or for council or for our community. We respectfully request that we reject this application.
Question? The next person that indicated maybe is Kevin Hart. Kevin, do you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. Kevin Hart, I live at 1609 Mason Road. Good afternoon, everyone. I trust that you've had an opportunity to read all seventeen letters and the other 200 or so pages in your practice. My wife and I, Dr. Sarah Brown, have lived at the property on 1609 Mason Road since 2009. We purchased our property there and built our home with the idea of it becoming a neighborhood. It's obviously taken a little longer for that to happen, the development's a little bit slower, but we, right now, approximately six or seven properties in the neighborhood have recently sold and we know that two of the actual people who bought them have been families and will be building this spring. So we request that the council reject this application, to allow this to become a neighborhood with families, not just vacation rentals. There's already one that's been approved, as you've heard before. The housing question, 1645 Mason Road, has been built since approximately 2009 as well. It's been vacant for the most part. There is currently actually tenants that live there. They are respectable, they're quiet. The house is currently up for sale, which is also an issue for us. If it was sold and it was to become a vacation rental property, someone could just literally walk that property as well. As well, absentee owners, as you've heard before. This is approximately, I don't have the square footage, but over 3,000 square feet. They say three bedrooms, I'll stick to that. It's really four, probably more. So I think you can understand that there's a big concern that there'll be eight, 10, 12, 14, whatever people that are living there. So if you've already read all the letters, you kind of understand our position, you understand our concerns and we respectfully will reject the application. Thank you.
That's all. These speakers that indicated that they wish to speak on the list. The floor is now open to the public for any comments on this vacation rental in Mountain Gate Road.
My name is Sue Davies. I live at 1640 Windsor Drive. That's my house directly on the back fence from that, maybe the property that's in question. I have two children. Those two will play a lot in the neighborhood and they play with at least eight other families of children on that little street and the streets behind us. I've lived adjacent to vacation rentals in the past. I didn't have any objection to the adjacent vacation rental because at the time, I thought it was just for the suite. I'm actually really unhappy to find that it's the whole house because I was then notified that it became the whole house. This property has its been, you know, a suite or a vacation rental with the whole house with absentee landlords. I'm a concern for my children. They're going to be right over the road from people who have no vested interest in safety in our neighborhood. You know, there are going to be a lot of people who's home is just fine, they get to have a lovely time in the mountain town, and then they're going to be those ones who come with their, you know, fun toys and their parties. There's absolutely nothing between the back of my house and the back of this house. We hear everything that goes on in that house. They probably hear my kids too on occasion, but in general, you know, we're all pretty quiet. We don't want to hear a lot of partying going on every week in that house. That's all I can say. It's very much an objection to this thing, an absentee landlord with vacation rental with the whole house. I think we'll find out on my neighbors' side, so thank you.
Floor is open for this vacation rental, 1645 Mason Road. Just state your name and address, sir.
Chris Blakely. 1650 Windsor Drive, a kind of kitty corner to the back of the property in question. I won't say too much here, just to piggyback on what all the other neighbors' concerns are. Nobody there. Parties, kids, it's a family neighborhood. Lots of new building going to be happening there. We do have a kid, my partner and I have a kid on the way, so we don't need lots of noise and people out there partying. And just back to Counselor Nixon's comment there with the house next door. I just want to clarify, was it a suite or was it the whole house?
It is the whole house.
It's a suite. It's a single, a single bedroom in the secondary suite and that's what it's licensed for.
Okay, so this is...
Precisely, it's the whole house because my question asked on, I think, the October meeting for the other applicant there. I was told the house.
So what is happening is that we are going to be setting up a secondary category for vacation rental, a whole house rental and suite rental and we're going to have one public hearing of all the units that are going into suite only and they'll all be done one after another. Is that the way it's going to happen? One after another and right now, we only have one category of vacation rental. We are going to create two categories and then we're going to put, all the suite ones are going to go into the second category and I'm getting confirmed that that one, whatever the address is next door, is going to go into that category of suite vacation rental?
So that's correct. It'll get slotted into the case. So currently, it's the whole house, pretty much.
Until we create this new category...
Process in order.
Yes, but you have to remember too is that all these vacation rentals that apply as suites, they apply as suites and that's where they're going to be going. So, but we didn't have the category, so...
So that needs to be maybe made more clear to people. Yeah, as per, I've gone a little too far off track here, but yeah, I oppose this.
Your worship, just a question for staff while we're waiting to get those categories for the suites. Does not their business license specify that they're running a vacation home for a suite? Are they catching that on their business license?
Exactly, when they apply for their business license.
So we're not trying to fool the neighborhood and that business license clearly states this is for a vacation suite, right?
That's correct. However, I think the confusion right now is that if, because we don't have the two categories right now, if they wanted to switch to full home vacation rental and get rid of their secondary suite, they potentially could do that.
They would have to come back to council if they want.
They apply for a suite, but they potentially could have.
Thank you.
Floor is open for comments from the public. Yes, sir.
Tom Robson from 1700 Windsor. I just wanted a clarification about this in that if you have a vacation rental home, does that mean that there is not an owner resident in that home? I think that would be a very slippery slope in that the proven problems we've already encountered before we have even made enforcement have been a result of not having somebody present outside. So I just wanted a clarification about your thoughts down the road. That seems to be a preventative thing and I'm wondering what would be planned in that direction. Thank you.
Staff, any comments on that?
First, thanks to that, your worship. You know, we're going to be looking at what I'm calling chapter two for the vacation rental story and I intend to look closely and carefully at the secondary suite. There are some legal ramifications we need to be careful about because you can regulate use, but not users. It may be challenging to require that owners live in a property and that's something we need to go back.
The certi... Sorry, I don't want to take up a lot of time. My last question is just whether or not the certifications that we're talking about will follow the property because again, you get into the situation where you should have a perfectly responsible owner who sells the property and then you find out that all of that is wrong.
This is zoning that stays with the property. There is a business license that's required that has to be renewed every year. So there's two parts to vacation rental, zoning, business license.
Does that provide control over how that property is...
To the extent that they want to operate legally and properly, there would be both of those requirements. And if somebody had the zoning but wasn't running their business properly, their business license may be suspended or not renewed.
Thank you.
And I guess just to clarify that a little bit more, Mr. Whitehead talks about chapter two. Chapter two is taking a break from the public hearing process and really doing some in-depth study and coming up with a process for the next phase of the vacation rental and council is going to have some hard decisions to be making to give direction on the future vacation rental. And every comment that we get at a public hearing becomes part of that process of figuring out and it gets down to how close and how many in the neighborhood and whatever comments people are making will become part of, taken into consideration in the bigger picture of what we're going to do to regulate vacation rentals. So getting back to this one here on Mason Road, is there any comments from the public on this vacation rental? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Margaret Smith. I live at 1621 Mason Road, so we're the house next to the empty lot next to the house. I don't want to add too much more to what the objections that I've already given said. The biggest one for us is the absentee owners. Even though this is not an official vacation rental yet, over the past two years, we've seen multiple users in that house which have already brought with it increased parking issues, garbage issues that I personally have to deal with when the tenants go away, leave the garbage out three days before garbage day. The wildlife gets into it and, you know, that's not what we want to see in the neighborhood. We built ourselves there in 2013. We picked it because it's a lovely, quiet, family-oriented neighborhood and that's the way we'd like it to stay. Thanks for your time.
And hopefully, we're going to have a wildlife attracting bylaw pretty soon that'll talk about garbage. Looking for any comments a third time for this vacation rental on Mason Road.
Hi, I'm Cory Baker, 1660 Windsor Drive. We're adjacent, I suppose you would say. We have a clear view of the greenhouse in our backyard. And I don't want to repeat what everyone says, well, everyone's been super biased points. I agree, Matt Fong agrees with all of it. Well, agrees with everyone's points of like holding it. I should be clear with that. But, you know, and we do have a few, we have the one vacation rental in the area. Our biggest thing is we don't necessarily want anything that's totally adjacent. It just feels like too much. The biggest piece, again, to reiterate, is the absentee owners. And I think that another piece of this is looking at how the layout of the houses are sit. Like all the houses on Windsor, I shouldn't speak for everyone on Windsor, but most of the houses, people live in the back, like the living spaces in the back of those, and we don't have back alleys. So now we're like bumped up to everyone else's back and they want the view of Bagby, so we're all staring at each other here. So, you know, there's some privacy pieces around us too. I just want to try and be respectful of that. And, you know, again, we do have the new vacation rental in our area and even though they're good tenant or landlords, there's still been an increase in traffic anyways and you can't, you can't get any look at that, but it's just going to happen. You've got to make sure you're on good. I think that's where it's on section.
Floor is open a third time for any comments on Mason Road vacation rental. Any comments or questions from council? The floor is still open if you want to come up.
1650 Windsor Drive.
I just, 1650 Windsor Drive, I just got a question because Cory was talking about these lots also have building restrictions, so why aren't they followed? Like they have like, you can't have rentals, you can't have this and that, so why are these happening then?
Staff, do you think... Mr. Whitehead?
Yeah, your worship, if it is a land use contract on title...
Yeah, they're, they're registered to the...
Or, sorry, a building scheme on title, the city is not able to legally enforce those. That is in agreement with the original developer and...
So he, Mr. Flayak, just said those continue on and on and on.
Yes, they, they continue on, so it is, the only person who can enforce those is the adjacent neighbors through private court action. There's not a lot of value to those contracts, in my mind.
Any comments or questions from council on this vacation rental? Any final comments from the public?
Armando Federico, 1669 Windsor Drive, long-time resident up there. Thanks for letting me speak, council. I'm still a little unclear on the adjacent vacation rental. I think a lot of people feel like they have the wool pulling over their eyes. The way it was proposed was the vacation suite, now we're being told, I realize it's supposed to be going into a vacation suite, but now it's a vacation house, it's being rezoned. How would if that process changes, will it be readdressed?
There's going to be another public hearing because we're creating a zone for suite vacation rentals.
And we're going to have probably, I'm assuming we're going to have a couple of days where it'll just be one after another
and they will, they're approved as vacation rental, but the public hearing is going to put them into a suite vacation rental.
How would if that changes, will...
Anything that changes in zoning requires a public hearing, which is what we're doing right here.
Okay.
So people would be notified, we have a setting just like this, people will make their comments, council would then have to make a decision that it's going in or it's not. And it's going to be a council decision on the public hearing. Mr. Selvick made a comment earlier about somebody could change their mind. I, I, that's the first I've heard of that. It would not be, I don't know what the legality of it is, and I'm going to ask about it after the meeting, but my, my attitude is that it came for a suite vacation rental.
And that's...
That's where they're going to be going, and that's what the intent was at the table for them to be approved.
But that's not where it's approved, absolutely.
Because we didn't have the zone set up at the time, Armando.
Okay.
But the intent is that it will be going into a suite and there will be another public hearing, there'll be an opportunity for the neighborhood to come out and ensure that what, what they call is going to happen.
Well, what the intent was, okay, that's my only concern, thank you.
Okay. Going back to the public again for a third and final time for any comments on this vacation rental on Mason Road. I keep thinking you're going to get up to the microphone and say something to them.
So make sure the focus is on you, your worship.
Yeah, beautiful. Looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English, follows the favor, motion is clear.
Your worship, offering forward for discussion purposes that zoning amendment bylaw 2144, he read a third time.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion.
Your worship, I will rock these supporting this, this opening amendment panel for Mason Road.
Counselor English.
I concur with Counselor Nixon. I think, as I said before, this is one of these neighborhoods that we, we understood from the community that it is a very close knit neighborhood, there are families that live there and it's probably not a, a, a good fit, in my, in my view, for, for a vacation rental, except on a secondary suite situation where there's somebody there in the home. The difficulty in addition that I have with this one is that they're, they're absentee owners and, and that really is a problem, as one of the residents in the neighborhood said, you know, if they're not around, you look after the place and make sure the garbage gets correctly and that type of thing, probably even more difficult, so I'm not going to say that.
Any other comments on this motion, Counselor Saltz?
Your worship, having listened to the public, but also made private meetings with residents up there over recent days, the same concern. This is a residence that's a non, non-resident ownership and they have no control over the building, but also they have the place up for sale, and probably down now for sale, so a little concerned about what will happen in the future. The people in that neighborhood bought into, thinking that they were buying into a quiet neighborhood, adding more densification in this regard where there's no control over who comes and who goes, is, is problematic, I think, it's... So I will turn up with my fellow councilors and I will not support this review at all.
Any other comments or questions, Counselor Lindo?
Yeah, just a short comment, myself and other councilors, you know, we read the reports and, you know, look at the numbers here, and there's just a high level of opposition to this one for lots of reasons that were not seen. So following, in my mind, this process is a lot to do with listening to what you want to say. So I mean, that will be supported.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? Motion is to bylaw amendment 2144, we read a third time. All is fair, against, motion is defeated. That concludes our three public hearings, we're going to take a five-minute break and people are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if they so wish. If you have troubles sleeping at night, this is a good place to be.